Good morning. I'd like to call the April 21st, 2020 City Council Meeting to Order. Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes, here.
Soldner?
Here.
Bagwell?
Here.
Garza?
Here.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Here.
Fledgeable Agents?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Paul Brown will be giving our prayer again this morning. Thank you, Paul.
Would you join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we thank you. We thank you that we can come to you with our needs. We thank you that you provide daily. Lord, even in the darkest days, we can turn to you. And we seek your face now. Lord, we pray for healing. We pray for healing around the world. We pray for our medical personnel who are seeking to help those who are in great need. So protect them. Lord, we thank you for our first responders and seek for safety for them as well. Lord, we just turn to you with all of these matters. There are many that we need to make decisions about. And we pray for your guidance. Pray that we would do what's in the best interest of all. Lord, we do thank you for your love and your mercy. It's in Jesus's name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Next item, please.
A proclamation for Arbor Day.
And I'll be signing this and sending that along. So let's go ahead and move on to the next item.
Item five, oral communications from the audience.
I think we'll go ahead and skip this part as well, as we don't have anyone at the audience.
Item six, consent agenda.
Comments on the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for their discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes, next item, please.
Item seven A, consider ordinance authorizing bond sale.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and unmute our bond council.
Are you there? Good morning. Thank you for joining us.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. And we have on the phone Tyler Ellsworth and Dustin Avery with our Bond Council and Legal Council on the phone. So they're available if you have any questions regarding this. On March 17th of 2020, the City Council authorized a resolution for issuance of general obligation bonds. We conducted the sale yesterday. And just as a reminder, what we are funding is Main Street, the intermediate pump station that is funded by the sewer fund, the road and parking lots, the fire logistics building, and the southwest Bricktown Park. You have in front of you the bid results from our bid yesterday. I'm very pleased with the results. We had an offer for 1.889% from UMB Bank. That is the winning bid. There were eight, or sorry, 10 total bids. So it was very competitive.
Wow.
That's big.
There was a lot of interest. And we had projected a 2.07% interest rate in February, so pre-COVID-19. So this is lower than what we projected. So that is very good results. The Bond Council and the Financial Advisor have reviewed the ordinance that is attached. And they approve of it, and the city staff approve of it. Because they offered a premium, we were able to reduce the amount that we actually issued in bond. And so the amount that you'll need to use in the ordinance is $3,740,000. So staff recommends approval of the ordinance authorizing the issuance and delivery of general obligation improvement bonds, Series 2020A, and providing for the levying collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal and interest on the bond as they become due, and authorizing the mayor to sign all related documents. Do you have any questions?
Angela, I don't know if this is a question for you or Tyler. And I don't know if it's more appropriate for the end of the meeting. But I had a concern I was sharing with Deardoff about our debt coverage ratios with the reduction in sales tax revenue and our ability to pay those bonds back.
I asked Dustin about this. And really, those bonds that we issued for the sports arena and that we're collecting sales tax for the sports arena to pay, they are general obligation bonds. So they are the same type of bonds that we normally issue, that we're issuing today. And that isn't as big of an issue. Really, what we need to be worried about is cash flow. And I have no issues with the cash flow over the next couple of years, even if we do have a decline in sales tax. We carried over $3 million in our sports arena debt fund into 2020. So projecting it out the rest of the year and next year, we should not have any problems paying our debt. What we might find, depending on this impact, is that we can't pay off our bonds early like we intended to. That might be the result, but I don't think we'll have an issue paying them. If we did have an issue paying them, we would then be liable by levying property taxes to pay those.
Okay.
So they're not backed by our revenue from sales tax per se.
Okay, so this won't affect our bond levy at all either?
No.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you for that clarification.
Angela, I do have another question here. And it's kind of mixing apples and oranges here this morning. But I went back to our budget document here on page 162, where it talks about, and it itemizes the bond and interest fund itself. And as it states here, in summary, the total general obligation debt service requirement are as follows, and it goes through a schedule for a 20-year period. So as an example, the total bond indebtedness for, say, 2020 is $4.8 million in the interest and then the total requirement. My question is, is that, is that the component that we factor into what our bond and interest mill levy is? And then there are other bond indebtedness that are supported by other revenue streams? Maybe you can take a minute and explain that, if you wouldn't mind?
Right. So how our bond and interest fund works is we schedule out what we're going to be paying over the next 20 years or so, like you referenced. And we try to keep those bond payments in total right around $6 million. But the thing that we have to consider is the fact that, like, the sewer bonds that we just issued for the intermediate pump station, the sewer fund is then going to transfer money into our bond and interest fund to help pay for their share of our general obligation debt. And so we have the Stormwater Water and Sewer Fund all putting money into the bond and interest fund. And then we also get special assessments paid in through the county. When people pay their special assessments, we take that money and put it into the bond and interest fund as well. And that helps pay their portion of our debt as well. So we have to consider all these things. And then basically, the difference of what isn't paid is what we have to mill levy for. Does that make sense?
Yes. So this 3.7 today, would that be then added to the bond and interest schedule on a general obligation indebtedness today?
It will be added to the schedule. We are not going to have any payments for this particular bond issue until 2021. So when we're doing our 2021 budget, this will be part of the equation. And we do anticipate issuing more debt later in the year, especially for some sewer projects and maybe Apple Lane, if that's still on the table. So we will issue more debt later in the year. And when we do our 2021 budget, we will project what that debt issuance will be and project those payments to be paid in '21 as well. And try to balance that.
So in summary, for the general public and the taxpayer, typically, our goal has been that we try to stabilize our bond and indebtedness that does not exceed about, is it nine, nine and a half mil, something like that?
Close to 10.
Roughly? Pretty close to that. Yeah, that we're not dramatically increasing our bond and interest. And I think I wanted just to relay that, so for assurance to the general public.
This year is going to be a heavy bonding year.
Okay.
Because we haven't bonded as much the last couple of years. And like, Main Street was budgeted to be bonded, might have been back in '28 scene. And so we haven't bonded as much the last couple of years, and we're kind of making up for it this year. But we keep all that in mind when we're looking at the mill levy.
Very good. Thank you for that.
Does anything drop off this year, Angela?
Not completely. We have some bonds that reduce how much we're paying on them, but nothing drops off completely this year.
And Angela, you were speaking to how those special funds feed into the bond and interest fund or levy. Do we expect an impact to any of those special funds due to the COVID crisis? Like the sewer or any of those? Or would it be negligible?
It really depends. Like, right now, they're going to see a drop in cash flow because people aren't paying their bills. And I know we're going to discuss that later. But our plan is to try to get them caught up by year-end. So at the end of the year, that they'll be made whole and won't affect that too much. But what we do have to consider with the water fund is we're not cutting people's water off for non-payment for a couple of months. So we're not going to have those $30 fees. So we do have to be mindful of that. And I've talked with Brian about that as well.
But they have fairly healthy reserves, as I recall.
I think the water is doing better than sewer.
Okay.
But I think Brian's taking all that into consideration. He's doing a sewer rate study right now.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there further questions for Angela or Bond Council? I really appreciate all the explanation you provided. This can be kind of difficult to understand how the pieces work together for the general public. So thank you for that. Is there a motion or further discussion on this?
I would move to approve ordinance authorizing the issuance and delivery of $3,740,000, principal amount of general obligation bonds, Series 2020-A of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, and providing for the levying collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on the bonds as they become due, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second on this item, further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes, next item, please.
Item seven B, consider resolution authorizing bond sale.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. Always following that ordinance, we have the resolution prescribing the form and details and authorizing the delivery of principal amounts. So again, the amount for this is $3,740,000. The Bond Council and Financial Advisor have reviewed the resolution, and city staff all approve of the resolution. So we recommend approval of the resolution and authorizing the mayor to sign all related documents.
Okay. Questions or a motion?
Okay, I will move to approve the resolution prescribing the form and details of and authorizing the delivery of $3,740,000, principal amount of general obligation bonds, Series 2020A of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, previously authorized by an ordinance of the city and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Okay, hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Next item, please. That was loud. Okay.
Item eight, report to city officials.
Let's begin with you, Nancy.
Oh, nothing, just, I think everybody's getting stir-crazy. But just stay, stay safe.
Absolutely. What about you, John?
Oh, no, I have nothing this morning.
Okay, Steve?
No, I have nothing. This is the source me and I've been, I like it.
Thank you. Sarah?
Of course, I have something. No, I just wanted to address the council on some concerns. I spoke with one of the members of the Housing Committee. But what are we doing as far as people during this crisis of how they respond to any kind of code violation? Like, I know someone who needs their house painted, and then it's $6,000 to get it done. But then there's not really any place to get it done because it's not really essential to get your house painted, and he can't do it himself. So what is our direction?
That's a really good point. I would hope we would suspend those.
We pushed all that out.
Okay.
So really, the only code issues that we're really focused on now, if you want to call it focused, is weeds. We still get a lot of yard weed complaints. And but even those, we're being very flexible with people. But as far as any existing cases, I mean, municipal courts, for most parts, shut down. But any of those, we're just pushing them out.
Okay. And I know the municipal cases, but I didn't know about the cases we were holding in-house? As if what?
Yeah, I mean, we're working.
Some people have questions on, well, what do I do? And I, you know, just direct them to talk to Trenton.
Yeah, I think we're being very open about pushing that out. I mean, it is a time of year where they can do some of that work, but we're not proceeding with, you know, violations and, you know, court filings or anything like that.
Okay. And then just the grass. I know, I don't know if anybody else got the email about the grass. Is that maybe because that's the only thing the department has to do right now? That there's?
No, you know, those are the things we get complaints all the time. And part of the issue there is if it gets too long, I mean, too bad, then it can't get mowed very easily. And so our contract mower, you end up using bigger mowers. And we're being flexible with people on that as well. Typically, it's complaint-driven.
I couldn't believe there was even grass that tall already.
Well, yeah, it is. We've had a wet spring, if you will, already. We've had a lot of rain. But there again, we're not, you know, we're not, you know, taking people to court and those kind of things. We're going to work with them as best we can. But, you know, the idea is not to get too far behind.
Yeah.
You know, if you live in those neighborhoods with that, you just, the longer it gets, then the bigger mess it has. But we understand the situation we're in, and we're working with people, so.
Okay. Yeah, and one thing to note is that, you know, we've always had a community that's kind of come together to help people who can't handle those types of tasks or chores on their own. But I've seen an even bigger resurgence of that throughout this crisis. So if people are having trouble getting their lawn mowed or, you know, due to disability or other limitations, I'm sure that we could arrange some type of assistance. I could connect them with someone.
Yeah, I just know that with some of the things, you know, because of this, like you can't get a group of people to go paint a house because we can't have a group of people going to someone's house.
It's a very good point.
That's the only reason why I brought that up. I was just curious, or just to give the public a little bit of information on what we're entirely doing with that at the moment, just because there might not be. And, you know, I think everybody, especially with some landlords, you know, I mean, they're not getting paid for every one of their units at this time. I think everybody's kind of seeing the struggle. And everybody's just concerned about, how does this affect me? What is our information on that? So that was my only comment for today.
Yeah, it's a really, really uncertain time for a lot of people. And I want the public to be encouraged that the city's here to support them through this. And certainly, we're not going to bring the hammer down when everyone's in this mess.
Yeah.
I had a few items that, I don't really know where to begin. So I think I'll start with utilities. John? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, was that all you had, Sarah?
Yeah.
John, we had spoke a little bit about how we're not really governed by the KCC, and they had extended suspension of utility cutoffs. So we did make a decision, though, that we would also extend the suspension of utility cutoffs as well. And I think Angela was putting together some numbers about how that might impact us. And I don't know if we know the full impact of that yet.
Yeah, it's, obviously, we're not, we're not cutting any people off as, you know, following the governor's executive order. And we did see a dramatic increase, and probably almost 78% increase on what would typically be on our shut-off list and what is now. And so our plan going forward, regardless, and we aren't governed by the KCC, but going forward is that we're not going to shut people off. We're going to be very flexible in working with them in the months ahead because the concern is people get really far behind. And so we'll be very open to working through that, waiving any late fees, anything like that. It's usually not a big amount. But, you know, just to give you an example, in our billing cycle back in February through most of March, we had a 362 of our total cutoff. And in the next cycle, which would have been through April, latter part of March and April, we had 1,200.
Oh, goodness.
Yeah, it's like a big, a big jump there. However, I think Angela did report that once some of the stimulus checks started to arrive and maybe some of the unemployment benefits, people were beginning to start to address some of their bills so they don't get too far behind. But we'll be very flexible with people on that going forward.
Okay.
What's our, sorry?
Oh, no, go ahead.
What's our strategy for, once this is all lifted and all the bills become due? Like, our transition strategy?
So John and I were discussing that. And it's our goal to not, well, to encourage people to not allow bills to get too far built up because then we're concerned about their ability to pay those down. And you had mentioned that we want to get those all paid off before year-end.
Yeah, I mean, the strategy, as I said earlier, was just to work with people and be very flexible in what they can pay. You know, we typically have a pretty, you know, strict cutoff. You pay just like any other utility. And even in those cases, we have a payment agreement that we actually sign with individuals that they'll pay. But we usually, that's usually within a very short timeframe. And so the plan is to continue that, but really expand that out and work with people. And, I mean, the goal, as the mayor said, is not to get too far behind.
Yeah, is there any kind of letter issuance we can give people that are, we feel that are too far behind to give them a pay, like, an actual payment offer on, like, via letter or any kind of information to give them so that they're not just?
We do that as we go.
Yeah, I think our utility department is really great about working on payment plans.
I guess being proactive instead of waiting for them to call.
We're working with Rebecca, and we've talked about how to do this. So our plan is to send out a press release of sorts or at least get the information out there that if, what we plan on doing is a map. And if you're in this area of the map, you need to come in and either pay or sign a pay agreement, a payment plan by this date. So people clearly know what their, what the expectations are and what their deadlines are so they can communicate with us. That's the biggest piece that we're asking, is just communicate with us. And we'll try to work with them to extend it over a few months if they need that or a few weeks.
I didn't know if we were going to maybe send a letter to, like, directly to people's addresses if they're behind with?
We still have been doing what we call our notify system. It does an automated phone call, text, and email to people when they're scheduled to be cut off, but not actually cut off. So they're still getting reminders that they're past due. But we're trying not to.
Well, I guess I'm going to rephrase it again. Outside of our normal activity, are we maybe conducting a letter? We can send the people that have the payment plan, like, maybe like a payment, six-month payment plan. Sometimes if someone gets to see something, they're like, okay, you're, here's a six-month payment plan for your particular, and they're more apt to respond to the letter to start paying?
And that's where we were working with Rebecca to come up with some way to publicize this and then put that plan on the website so they could go out, print it off, select if they want bi-weekly or monthly payments, and then send that in.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's really important to be proactive. That's great.
Right, yes. And if we're not open to the public, we're willing to work with them over the phone.
Because one of the things I was talking with the community foundation about was, when all this gets lifted, there's so many people that are just, and they're going to be hitting up Salvation Army, and they're going to be, you know, getting all of these resources that might have already been replenished through all of this. So I know that there's going to be some crazy times coming up when the, all the bills come due. Because it's not like we're forgiving the bills. Eventually, all this is going to come, come due. And I know that there's going to be a lot of, a lot that's going to be going on with that, so.
Yeah, and we had discussed that a little bit, John, as well. Do we anticipate any long-term financial impact from the utilities? Well, such as lost payment for cutoffs? Or is all of that not?
I don't see that impacting. I mean, I, I think there's a lot of things that have been impacted. But, you know, utilities are still going to get their money for the services that they provided. And, you know, we're in good shape. And, you know, even though I talked about the shut-off, we still got a great percentage of our city that pay their, that are paying their bills on time, so it's not uncertain.
Well, I think that that incredible increase is indicative of the huge increase in unemployment. And I know I've gotten a lot of calls, I'm sure you all have too, about, about the unemployment insurance benefit system. And also specifically with independent contractors, I know guidance is coming out from the Kansas Department of Labor, hopefully later this week or early next week, on how people who are gig workers or independent contractors such as hairstylists can get that unemployment assistance. So I just encourage people to continue to follow the Department of Labor website and Facebook and kansasbenefits.gov, or get kansasbenefits.gov to continue applying for those benefits. I know it's been a frustrating process, but more help is on the way there. John and I were on a call yesterday with Senator Moran to talk about some needs locally that we had. A lot of, a lot of that focused on our healthcare providers and their need for additional testing. As all of you know, the White House did release guidelines on reopening our economy. And those guidelines are really contingent upon having adequate testing and contact tracing and things like a decrease in number of cases over a 14-day period. We have not experienced a decrease in cases yet, unfortunately, locally or Kansas, or in Kansas. So we aren't on that immediate path to reopening. But did speak with Senator Moran. He indicated that he heard our concerns and knows that we're last in the nation in testing, and it will do whatever he can to help us, as well as Governor Kelly's really working on a plan to create swabs and other necessary supplies statewide in order to do more testing. So another thing we discussed with Senator Moran was the large drop in sales tax revenue and other revenue streams that our city will, you know, definitely see. And if there will be any assistance at the federal government to help cities and counties. He did not indicate that anything would be coming to help us. But we'll continue to push our congressional delegation on some of those items because, as you know, we have to continue offering services regardless of the amount of cuts we have to make. People expect us to offer those services. And unlike the federal government, we can't just print money and run a deficit. We have to balance our budget every year. And the last thing I wanted to touch on is the reopening of the economy. I'm sure you're all getting questions about this. I get questions about this every day. Again, we need to follow the White House's guidance on this. And then the state has precedence over local control. When the stay-at-home order is, you know, expires at the beginning of May, if the governor chooses not to extend that, then locally, we will need to take steps to start to open our economy in a safe manner. And so a task force is being convened, mostly headed by the County Commission and the Health Department. the County Commission and the, uh, Health Department, Reno County Health Department. And they're going to have subcommittees, um, in each industry that will discuss the best ways to open our economy, um, while keeping employees safe. This is all very new. You'll learn more about it as everyone else does, but I wanted to, to let the public know. And you all know that plans are in motion. We don't, um, intend to just lock down the town until we have a vaccine. Um, but it, but it's paramount that we keep people safe as, as we begin to, um, consider economic ramifications of this. So, that's all I had. John?
Um, counsel, wanted to, uh, spend a little time this morning to kinda revisit the conversation we had on April seventh about, um, you know, our projected sales tax. We've talked a lot about that. Uh, just a reminder that, you know, that, that represents thirty-five percent of our general fund revenue. So it's a big, uh, source of revenue for us. And, and, um, you know, one of the things we looked at is our sales tax is we're, we're two months in lag. So, you know, we really aren't seeing the impact today that we'll see probably at the end of May and more than likely at the end of, uh, end of June. And so, um, I shared some with the council about, you know, what we were doing internally to try to, uh, prepare for that, and because it's gonna happen. And so in front of you, I've got, uh, a copy of what we're calling a personnel cost reduction contingency plan. And we really put together three phases on this. And, uh, the first phase really, uh, talked, uh, just about the elimination of all of our seasonal and our part-time help, also a hiring freeze and all of our vacant, uh, positions. And we calculate out that, you know, just through the balance of this year, that's gonna save us about, um, uh, six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Phase two, um, which actually goes into effect April twenty-sixth, primarily focused on, um, overtime issues in our police department, um, also travel restrictions, our travel budgets. Obviously, nobody's going anywhere. And we estimated a savings just on the HPD, Hutch Police Department overtime, uh, of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So in that category, we're at three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in projected savings for a total between phase one and two of nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Now, uh, you recall that, that we talked about our goal, um, or our projected loss was about one point three million. And one point two of that, um, this is a balance here, was estimated towards sales tax. The balance of that hundred thousand was franchise fees and some of our, uh, you know, rentals and just some miscellaneous revenues that, that we won't, uh, see this year. So, um, we really hit that pretty hard. And, uh, I think, you know, the goal of our fund balance is, we've talked for years, i- is to been so, to be solid and to prepare for things like this where maybe revenues didn't come in as we expected. And so, um, it's all right to use some of that fund balance. Um, but I think this is really, uh, you know, some big decisions are gonna come at the end of May and at the end of June when we start really seeing, uh, that impact. And phase three there, um, was really getting deeper into the organization, looking at possible for, furloughs, uh, uh, some long-term furloughs and layoffs of certain positions, um, that we've identified. And, and, and so you can see the total there of about six hundred and eighty-three thousand additional savings in that, that area. Um, but my, my recommendation would be to not go to phase three until you see, you know, what that impact is. Because I think it's so important that, you know, we're, we're able to communicate, not only with the community, but with our employees, as to why we're doing these things. And it's not just based on a projection. And, you know, phase one and two, um, really don't have a large impact on any of our, well, don't have an impact on any of our full-time employees, other than those in the parks and facilities that are now, some of our supervisors are now on a mower because we've lost a lot of our, uh, summer, uh, temporary help that we rely on. And so things may get a little shaggier, um, you know, as we go.
Like all of our hair.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, like our hair. Um, so, so I think phase one and two are pretty solid. And, and hats off to Chief Hooper, who really took a look at our police department overtime. And, you know, we're on, uh, uh, three twelves or twelve-hour shifts. And so we've changed that around. In the current situation where we've got, uh, shift work, um, doesn't allow for, um, any overlap. So we would have officers that are on-call, uh, making a call right towards the end of their shift, and they have to come back and, and fill out reports and do all that, or hang around for court. And so now, we're gonna basically have still the three twelves, um, w- with basically a total of six squads versus four. And so there'll be a four-hour overlap between each of those shifts. And, uh, um, we've communicated that with the, uh, with the police department, the FOP, and, uh, they appear to be on board with that change. And so, um, that, that's really something that we, we needed to address, you know, a long time ago. And sometimes you get into situations like this and it...
Are we doing the three twelves still, so the four tens?
Yeah, three twelves, yeah. We looked at the four tens and had communications and a lot of, a lot, there was resistance to that because it was a big change. The department really did, uh, depart, the, the, the officers liked the, the twelves. And, uh, as we looked at this, according to Chief Hooper, uh, we, we can probably save more on overtime with this format than we could have with the four tens. So, and it's not a big change for them at this point in time, other than when they're gonna start, you know, start their shifts. So, uh, so I really feel, you know, pretty good about that. Again, that's something we probably should have been looking at, you know, a long time ago, and really appreciate their, their efforts there. Um, but, you know, when we look at sales tax, and, and that's what's really crazy about this. I saw yesterday on the news where, um, you know, grocery sales in Kansas have increased like sixty-nine percent over the same period last time. And so when we talk about retail sales drop, we all drive around, we see restaurants closed and what have you, oh, but we're not getting a sales tax. Well, you know, people are still eating. Um, so th- they're shopping more. And so it'll be really interesting to see what that truly looks like. Now, we know the big-ticket items, car sales, you know, things like that, there's gonna be definitely a drop there that, that we'll see. But, um, uh, it's just, it'll be interesti- interesting to see. And I was on a call last week with city managers in south-central Kansas, and we, we, I brought up this question. What are you looking at in terms of sales tax, uh, drop? What percentage? And I shared that we were at fifteen percent. And generally, everybody was in that ten to, uh, Wichita was at twelve percent, in that ten to fifteen percent range, some even higher than that, depending upon what their, you know, retail, uh, market looks like. But, uh, so I think we're in pretty good company, at least with that projection. Whether it's right or not, we'll find out, you know, uh, a- a- as we go. So...
John, do you have a specific benchmark in mind after phase two that would initiate phase three?
Well, I, I think w- w- we really see where we're at. Because really, thi- this, this here, phase one and two, really address our projected, you know, one point two loss. And so, you know, if that's where we're at, that's the, 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 the path wrong, then we probably wouldn't have to look at, uh, look at phase three. So, and that's why I really wanted to do this in phases because, as I said earlier, I don't wanna jump in and to phase three and, you know, disrupt lives. And we've still got work to do in the city, um, and then find out that, eh, maybe the revenue, uh, drop wasn't as big as we thought. And so it's something that we can, you know, move with and, um, be fluid, if you will.
So as long as our revenue drop doesn't exceed that fifteen percent projection, we won't have to go into phase three, which is for lowering and...
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And, and we would be using a little bit of our fund balance. And I think, you know, in our conversations earlier, I think we were all comfortable with, you know, you know, some of that. I, you know, would be uncomfortable if we didn't do anything. And then come August, you're working on your budget and realize, boy, our fund balance really dropped, and how are we gonna make that up? Because we've worked hard over the last, you know, seven or eight years to, to build that fund balance, to, uh, try to at least get to our policy level. And we really made that at the end of, uh, two nineteen, a, a little over five point five million, I think, something like that. Um, so really feel good, good about that. Um, but you can't overemphasize the importance of that, you know, when we run into situations that we're in today, so.
Well, and we may need that fund balance in the next eighteen months in case this downturn isn't
Yeah.
quick like people are projecting it to be. We don't, we don't know.
Yeah, I, I just hope we, you know, the, restart the economy and it, it jumps quicker and, and, uh, you know, maybe quicker than what it did in oh-eight, oh-nine during the recession, so.
John, I'd like to get your thoughts a little bit here. And I certainly support phase one and phase two and understand what might be the, uh, the driving force for phase three, because it all particularly deals with personnel. Um, but I went back to the budget, the twenty-twenty budget, and, uh, referred to the general fund expenditure summary by departments. And it lists all the various departments and so on. And have you given some consideration to really, uh, drilling down, um, on some of our fixed operating cost to consider some reductions, whether they be across the board, uh, whether or not you're considering non-departmental, um, expenditure reductions, whether we're considering substantial, uh, deferrals of, uh, capital improvement programs? Um, and you can go down this whole list here and begin to cherry pick, uh, this and that and the other that, uh, I'm not sure, I don't understand the budget well enough to where in this expenditure, how much of that is personnel versus, uh, operating, fixed operating cost, equipment and so on. So I'd like to get your, your thoughts on that, John?
Well, you know, we, we've talked about this, and, and our, basically, our general fund budget is sixty-eight percent, almost seventy percent personnel.
Understand.
And so you take that out of the equation, then you're down to the thirty percent. And the council will recall, uh, in past budget years where we've just said, okay, across the board, cut five percent. And so, you know, over the past several years, I think we've really kinda nailed down true cost of our commodities or utilities and those kind of things. And, and so then you get into your capital equipment. Um, and, and most of those projects, as we've just seen today, have been bonded. Um, we've not done a lot of those out of, out of cash. Um, equipment, um, most of the trucks that were scheduled for this year were bought back in January, February. And so, uh, otherwise, we would have looked at, you know, maybe putting a hold on, uh, some of those. And so, um, it, it just, from my perspective, you know, looking at the personnel side of things isn't always the easiest, granted. But it's really where, you know, where the money is. Um, I mean, we can shave a little bit here off of our projected utility build, but who knows what that, what that's gonna turn out to be. Um, but I think going forward, we'll definitely look at that. Uh, we haven't instituted any kind of a, across-the-board cut. Uh, we've really done some bigger cuts with these personnel decisions and hiring freezes and, uh, uh, you know, just the number of, um, seasonal and part-time labor that we rely on every year, that's not gonna be there. And there'll be an impact to that. I mean, there will be. And it'll be maybe how our drainage ditches look, um, how our parks look from time to time. But, but we'll catch up, we'll catch up on that. So, um, but not to say that as we go into the two thousand and twenty-one budget, that will have to be, uh, something that, that we look at. But anybody that's been around and worked in budgets, we've done that, you know, many, many times. And I feel really good about our line item budgets that, you know, you can only take so much out, or you're just playing a game, and then you'll over, you'll overspend that. Um, I mean, we got, you know, utility costs that are fixed and all of those things. But, um, you know, these phases here really were focused on probably the biggest part of our budget that could have the biggest impact. But, but, uh, councilman, we'll definitely continue to, to look at that as we go. And as I said, at the end of May, we'll see, you know, where we're at. And it could be a lot worse than what we think, or it may not be near as bad. And, you know, we'll, uh, work through this, so.
Okay, I just kinda wanted to get your thoughts on, um, how you contrast personnel versus, uh, fixed operating costs and...
That's such a small part of the budget. I mean, it really is.
Well, it, you know...
Well, it's a thirty-four million dollar budget.
Yeah, I, I, I know.
It's pretty substantial, so, yeah.
You know, you can, you can nickel and dime supplies and...
You can.
Uh...
I think the only thing, I guess, travel, that was what we estimated, about eighty grand. So that, you know, that, that's one of the first line items back in the day we would go to is travel. And, okay, we'll reduce that down. And here, we basically just eliminated all nonessential travel, and there's not much people moving anyway. Um, then you get into, you know, contractual arrangements and what that looks like, and utilities and those kind of things. But, um, certainly it's something we should look at, you know, every year.
And John, I was looking here, we have eight vacancies in public works, is that correct?
Uh, I think that's, yes, yes.
Well, I'd, you know, we have to give our employees in public works and police and fire our kudos, cause they're doing very well and doing, like, public works are eight men short, and you're still doing the job. So, I give you the kudos and them the kudos. We keep going and have to get the job done regardless.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And they, and they are. I mean, we're out there doing it. And that's why I think this, this plan here, you know, i- i- is gonna protect that a little bit until we, until things would, would, would progress, which I don't anticipate. Um, but at least we're prepared for that. And I'm glad you brought that up. We, we did meet, or I did meet with, Tom and I, with, um, the representative from SEIU, the union, and, and really walked through this scenario that we're talking about today, um, so that they can understand exactly why we're doing what we're doing. Um, and more importantly, that, that phase three, which we talked about, that was a hard thing to talk about, but understood, uh, by both parties. Um, but, but that that would only come into play if we can lay out for you, here's, here's the reality of this. Um, you can't make up, uh, lost revenue. It is what it is. And if we can show what our sales tax revenues are, which here we showed that we project that we'll lose about one point two, um, maybe that happens, maybe it doesn't. And so I think it's important we just keep that, that communication there.
I've tried to stay in communication with our incoming city manager about some of our, um, tiered phases. And, um, I don't know if you've been having any conversations with him as well, but I...
I hadn't sent him this. I was planning on it, but, yeah.
No, that'd be great. I haven't, I haven't sent him the document, but, um, I think he's going through a lot of the same challenges in his, in his community. So i- it's not like there will be a huge learning curve. This is impacting everyone.
Right.
Yeah, it's a tough time to make this transition for everybody.
But mayor, that's all I really had on, on the, uh, budget. If there's any questions about the police department schedule change, I've got Chief Hooper here. He can address some of that. I probably oversimplified what it is. But, um, it took me a while to, to really...
Yeah, you can, he can come in and...
Okay, yeah, chief, we'll have Chief Hooper kinda explain the move from
I'd like to hear.
our current three twelves to our new three twelves.
Okay, that'd be great.
Was this, I'm like, powers are the same, what's the difference?
Yeah, it's, there's a difference.
Did you con, what was the main consideration between not the four tens and keeping the three twelves?
Well, I'll, I'll kinda give you the advantages of both. Um, I originally looked at one of the, well, let me go back to the fallacy of the, the system that we had set up. Um, the way it's set up currently right now is there are two platoons, and each platoon has two squads. A platoon covers a twenty-four hour period. And those two squads on those platoons both work twelve-hour shifts. So obviously, there's twenty-four hours in a day, so there's no overlap in those two squads. And so that creates a lot of issues. Um, obviously, we're emergency services.
Yeah.
And at the end of your shift, when a domestics called in, or a bank alarm, or a DUI, or a wide variety of calls, we can't say, well, sorry, I'm at, I got, I'm in the last thirty minutes of my shift, wait till the next shift comes on, cause I ca- we can't do that.
Yeah.
And so when those officers respond to those calls at the end of their shift, uh, and sometimes they're stuck on those calls for two or three hours. And then they have an hour's worth of paperwork, and now you've got four hours worth of overtime because there's no overlap.
Yeah.
The other problem with the twelve-hour shift is that we're based off of a two-week pay period. And so one week, they work three days on, and they're gonna have four days off in that week. And so they've worked thirty-six hours. And then the next week, they work forty-eight hours. So that's an o, that's eighty-four hours in a two-week pay period. And so that's an automatic, built-in four hours of overtime. So they're supposed to have a short day. They're supposed to have a day in those two weeks where they only work eight hours. And so that takes up those four hours overtime. But what has been happening is because we're minimum staff all the time, because of our allotment of manpower and because of, you know, shortages of officers, the sergeants can't send anybody home, uh, for those four hours. So they gotta work their twelves because, you know, I can't go down to four officers for the entire city of Hutchinson. It's just a, a safety factor there. And so if you take roughly forty officers that are specifically assigned to patrol, four hours of overtime every two weeks, that's a hundred and sixty hours of overtime every two weeks that those officers were, that were paying out. Um, and so I had to come up with a system that created some overlap between shifts to address these specific problems. Originally, I was, I looked at, I looked at multiple different schedules, um, trying to balance between supervisory oversight and the savings of overtime, along with proper manpower and staffing on the street. Um, one way to do that, you can do eights, tens, or twelves. Um, and I was also trying to also balance not disrupting the employees' lives as much as we possibly could. Eights are a vital way to do that because you can, you can overlap eights. Um, but I ultimately really kinda looked at tens because if I do tens and I do three ten-hour shifts in a twenty-four hour period, that gives me thirty work hours in a twenty-four hour period. So that gives me six hours of overlap. So between every squad, it gives me two hours of overlap that I can, that I can work with. The advantage of the ten-hour schedule is, is it provides more supervisory oversight because the lieutenant is there with their two sergeants, and they work the exact same hours. hours as the officer. So it provides more supervisory oversight, and that was a benefit to me, because with that lieutenant in charge of controlling that overtime, I knew that that lieutenant would send people home early, or bring people in off the street when they have reports that they're late with, and, and we could accommodate, and they would actually send people home on their eight-hour day. Or maybe they schedule two ten-hour days with the two-hour overlap. That was not really well received by the FOP, because they really liked their twelves. And so I kind of went back to the drawing board and looked, is there a twelve-hour option that can benefit us? And the twelve-hour option that I ultimately came up with will allow us to even better control overtime. If that's our number one priority, I'm going to be able to control a ton of overtime. It provides a little less supervisory oversight. Because now what I've got is the same two platoons that we had before, but instead of two twelve-hour squads, there's three twelve-hour squads on those platoons. The squads are a little bit smaller, but for three twelve-hour squads in a twenty-four hour period, now I have thirty-six hours of man-hours, so I've got twelve hours of overlap on a twenty-four hour period. And that means that there's four hours of overlap between every squad. So what that allows us to do is obviously, that short day, we can easily send somebody home, but during those overlap hours, we are able to schedule those overlap hours during our busiest times of day. So you've got a squad that's got sergeant and six officers on. And now, during the busiest times of day, in the evenings, when they're experiencing a lot of domestics or things like that, a whole nother squad comes in. So now I have two squads on, so I potentially have two sergeants and twelve officers that could be on during that timeframe. Now, since I have so much overlap, I know that every off, and every single day, an officer from every one of those squads is going to have their eight-hour day. But because I have the potential to have twelve officers on the street, I can send two of them home to cover for their eight-hour day. They're just going home. It's scheduled into the, and they already know that that's my time off and I have to go home. It also allows that that outgoing squad that's late in their twelve-hour shift, if I've got four hours' worth of paperwork, I get pulled off the street now and I get grounded in the Police Department to complete my paperwork that's required before I go home, because the other squad is answering calls for service now. And so it allows us to strategize on where we put those overlaps, so that we don't have, those officers don't have to take calls at the end of their shift and get held up on overtime and things like that. So just by that, the thing I don't like about it is, one lieutenant, now a lieutenant covers a twenty-four hour period, so I have to rely on sergeants sometimes when that lieutenant is not there. He's available for call, but he's not physically in the building.
How does, how does the two-week pay period work in that one?
Well, because we are emergency services, so the law allows us to work off of a two-week pay period. So we don't have over, if we work over forty hours in one week, that's okay, it's still on overtime. We have to work over eighty hours in a two-week period.
Okay.
So we work off a two-week pay period.
That was, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Well, you mentioned the, you know, the priority of reducing overtime, but another reason the council was interested in the four tens is because this is emergency services, and it's stressful, not just physically, but mentally. Do you have any concerns about fatigue for a twelve-hour shift?
I do. When I first got here, I'm not, I, I've, I've been upfront with the FOP, I've been upfront with my staff, city staff, I'm not a big proponent of the twelve-hour shifts. We were on twelve-hour shifts when I got here, and that was one of the first things that I've looked at possibly changing. Because I do worry about, I, it's, it's human nature, the officers are not as fresh the last three or four, two hours at the end of their shift as they are earlier in the day. And so that was something that I also have concerns of. And when I addressed the FOP right after I got here, that was something that they were intimately, adamantly opposed against. They really wanted to keep their twelves. And one of the, and so we sat down with them and looked at that, and one of the things I said was, okay, I'm not going to look at taking your twelves away from you unless it becomes a problem. If there's a problem where we have increased liability at the end of your shift, we start seeing officers having accidents at the end of their shift, maybe even small things like professionalism complaints, where they're getting rude or short-tempered, those type of things, and that is a major concern of mine. And in the year and a half that I've been here, there has not been one problem that has crept up at the end of their shift to allow me to believe that it's in, I, I know that they're less sharp, but it hasn't inherently become a problem.
Oh, that's so good to hear.
Yeah, and so, you know, in working with them, they're so used to working those twelve-hour shifts, and unless there's a reason, I don't want to take that away from them, because that's what they really want. And in this case, the twelve-hour shifts allow me to even better control overtime. I know I, I told Mr. Deirdoff that easily, we're looking at a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar savings, we're going to do better than that.
Yeah.
That's what I can guarantee you, but we're going to do better than that with controlling this overtime. Now, law enforcement, we can't prevent all overtime.
Yeah.
I have a homicide, guy's got to come in and, and work. But we will do better than that two-hundred-and-fifty.
On this whole thing, how about sick time, when you have an officer sick? Do you call another officer in, or?
Currently, the way we are right now, and that's one of our problems, if, if an officer, we're at minimum staffing, so if an officer calls in sick, we have to call somebody in on overtime to work it. Another issue that we have, and I'll, I'll be a hundred percent honest with, with the council, I'll give you some examples of, for example, the Patriot Day Parade, or the Christmas Day Parade, those type of things, those require twenty-two positions to run that parade. Some of those things that we utilize with PSAs and things like that, but because of our staffing levels, that's all overtime. That we, so those are overtime assignments. The new twelve-hour shift where we have this overlap, if we can create that overlap during the parade time, and I got four hours of overlap, I potentially can use the new squad coming on to supplement the manpower for that overtime parade. So I can cut down overtime for those type of assignments-
Do I ever use-
Based on on duty personnel.
Do I ever use, like, retired?
I'm sorry?
Do I ever use retired for any of the parades, or like?
We have, we have volunteer patrol, they still work, and, and I know you're not familiar probably with this being fairly new on the council, but one of the programs I implemented when I got here is a police service aid program, and those are people that are either retired or maybe college students from ACC or Sterling College, and we pay them twelve-fifty an hour as opposed to like fifty dollars an hour for an officer on overtime. And it's been a good training ground for us, for new officers, so we utilize them for a lot of those assignments, too, to try to save some money there, yeah.
And Chief, can you speak a little bit to the staffing shortages, and if those have been mostly remedied, or if we're still in a, you know, deficit there?
We are still, when I got here, and we, we let some people go, we were almost twenty-five officers short at one point. I have an authorized strength of seventy-five, so that's a third of my police force that we were short. Typically, you're lucky if you can put maybe five or six officers on in any given year. We've put on twenty-five officers since I've been here, twenty-five new officers. Now, we've lost some more with retirements and some additional terminations and things like that. So currently, as we sit right now today, I'm nine officers short. I was twenty-five, I'm nine, which is pretty good. But the problem, and herein lies the problem, when you're twenty-five officers short and you're, you're, that means you're not paying twenty-five officers. So you have to pay other officers overtime to bridge that gap. Right now, I'm nine officers short, which still means that without some changes in the way we do business, I still have to pay out some overtime, because although I'm physically nine officers short, I also have seven officers in training, so they don't really count. So I'm working sixteen officers short, but we're only paying nine officers short. And that's why, even with this overlap, we're going to have, we're going to be short one officer on each one of those squads. So there's actually going to be five officers and a sergeant in each individual squad. So there will be times during the day, we can, so to your point, sir, if now with this, if somebody calls in sick, that allows us the flexibility to, instead of calling somebody in overtime, I only have to cover four hours. And so you have somebody from the, the next squad come in a few hours early to help cover that gap. So we don't have to call, and then they can flex out early at the end of their shift when the next squad comes in. So then I got four hours, I can chop off the end. And so that will help prevent that overtime for people that are sick.
And I believe that overtime line item in our budget last year was about half a million dollars, is that, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So we can expect to at least see a fifty percent reduction in this with this plan?
Yeah, we had about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in overtime last year on a half-a-million-dollar budget, but about a hundred thousand dollars of that was reimbursable overtime, either through grants or things like that. So we spent about six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, so we've about a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars over budget, but like I said, we were basically twenty-plus officers short during the year.
Yeah.
So even paying that six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars more, a hundred-and-fifty more than we should have, we still gave about a half-million dollars back last year in non, in person, non-used personnel funds.
Okay.
So we were still under budget by a half-million dollars in personnel costs overall, but we're over budget in overtime.
Overtime.
And so we're going to fix that.
Okay.
Because this year, as we move in and we're getting closer to full staff, obviously, we can't afford to full, pay full staff and, and overtime. But our budget is about a half-million dollars, but we're going to come in under that.
Well, fantastic. And again, it's, it's not just about the money, it's also about officer health and well-being, and if, if they're fatigued and working overtime, and that's, that's not good for anyone, them or the public, so.
Yeah, and, and you ask about that with the twelve-hour shifts, but the thing that concerns me most is with no overlap right now, if I get a call at the end of shift and I have four extra hours, now that's sixteen hours.
Exactly.
Right? And then I have a couple hours to go home and sleep, I got to go to another twelve tomorrow night. The advantage of this schedule is when their twelve hours is up, they're done. They're going to get to go home, they're going to, and they're still going to get two days off in a row, and then three days off in a row, and so they're still going to get the advantages of their days off, what they like, but they're also going to be able to go home at the end of their shift.
Well, I appreciate your leadership on mediating that with the FOP.
Yes, ma'am.
And hopefully, that maybe might reduce burnout, too, because, you know, like I said, sixteen hours, and then sleeping, and then twelve hours, you know, a lot of people can, can definitely get burnout. But I just wanted to say that we appreciate everything that the Police Department does-
Yeah, absolutely.
-in keeping people safe, and, and it's a very vital piece of, you know, a society. So just thank you for everything that you do, thank all the people on the police force, and, and during these trial times, you know, we did have to look at overtime, but it's a benefit to both, I think, both the budget and, and both the health of, of the Police Department. And hopefully, we can get you those, hopefully, we can get nine more trained, we actually have a full Police Department, but, so I just wanted to say thank you for your service.
Well, thank you very much for that. I, I'm very blessed with, there's some great men and women that protect the city every day, and so I'm very blessed with the hard work that they put in, so.
Thank you so much.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
I wanted to circle back around to a comment that Councilman Dave Line made about line item budgets, outside agency funding, and, you know, whenever we get into Phase Three, and this is just to kind of plant in your head, the outside organizations that we fund, should there be cuts there, like we're cutting our employees? And, and we always talk about that, and it's always a tough conversation to have. We've got a handful of those organizations that we fund that aren't within the city organization, and so that may be something else for you all to consider as we get into Phase Three, if that, if that should happen.
That's a good point. That's a good point. If our employees are feeling-
Right.
-feeling that, we should probably consider those others. Thanks, John.
And I think, Madam Mayor, that's all I had today. And we, we covered the utility, that was my next report, but I think we covered that earlier.
Yeah. Well, again, John, thanks for all your leadership on all of this. You've just been so responsive and proactive, and really looking at the city's best interests instead of, you could have easily coasted, John.
Yeah, it's a, it'll be a retirement that I'll always remember.
Yeah, yeah.
Only retired once, but it's, I was talking to somebody else the other day that's a CEO